Those of you who are joining us to another special public board meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners, just a reminder, if you have not yet, please mute your phones. Anyone who does not mute their phone may be muted by the call moderator or removed from the call. Today's agenda will be slightly amended to accommodate for timing due to our meeting being a remote meeting. I'm going to do a roll call of the board members to identify who is on the call. Just again, members, just let me know if you're here and then I will move us into the meeting. Commissioner Bondima is here, yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Frank joined us?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Present.
Commissioner McFadden?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Richardson? Commissioner Roberts, I see you.
Hey.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks and Commissioner Reed I do not have heard from. Okay.
I am here, Commissioner Chinna. This is Sonia Sante Lisa.
Thank you. Seven, I have seven. Alrighty, is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved, Bondima.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Robert, thank you. All those in favor? Bondima?
Yes.
Okay, Brooks here yet? Okay, Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Present, yes.
Thank you. McFadden?
Yes.
Reed? Richardson? Nope. Roberts?
Yes.
And Chinna? That's seven. Any opposed? No abstentions, and we have three right now that are absent from the meeting.
Commissioner Chinna, does that Commissioner Brooks and your absent? I only had two, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, is Commissioner Brooks online now? I have Reed and Richardson. Richardson says that she is muted, so she is with us now, okay. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session minutes?
So moved, Frank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Roberts? Okay, those who are in favor, Bondima?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed? I'm sorry, Richardson? Okay. Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm also in favor.
Commissioner Chinna?
Yes?
Okay, I'm just making sure you can hear me because for some reason I'm in the attendees group, not the participant group, so when you want to hear from the CEO, you're gonna need to flag me because for whatever reason I am pushed into another grouping. But this is the CEO. I moved from my laptop to my phone because the laptop was not providing the audio, so I don't know what's up, but I'm just letting you know that.
Alrighty, thank you. Yes, seven. Commissioner Richardson, I see voted, okay. And no one's opposed, no abstentions. I still have, I have two absent, correct?
Vernon Reed's present.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm just letting you know, I mean, I know that the names are listed on the screen, but there are so many that I actually have to call your names because of the volume of names, so I apologize for that. Is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
So moved, Frank.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Bondima.
Thank you. And I'm gonna call out for those in favor. Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks? Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson? I'll wait for her computer. Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, and Richardson. Eight, no opposed, and one absent. Alright, the motion passes. Thank you.
What did we agree on?
Is there a motion? To approve the personnel employment and payment of PEP and the quasi-traditional matters?
So moved, Frank.
Is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Bondima?
Yes.
Brooke? I'm sorry. Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Robert.
Yes.
Richardson? Okay, yes, and Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's eight, and one absent? Okay. Now I'm gonna review the consent agenda. Board colleagues, now this is if you have an item that you want me to remove, I'm not seeing all of you at once, so you'll have to state your name and let me know, and let us know the particular question that you might have for staff as if we're removing these items. Item 8.01, which is a favor request for Western High School. 12.01 Barnes and Noble book sellers and the book rack. 14.01 E&amp;A Services LLC. 15.01 Simpson of Maryland Incorporated. 15.02 Commercial Camera and Security Incorporated.
They said they won't continue, I was like, this is what?
15.03 Commercial Cabling and Sound Incorporated. 15.04 J.F. Fisher Incorporated. 15.05 J.F. Fisher Incorporated. 15.06 J.F. Fisher Incorporated.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I wasn't picking up. With Western, the 6.01, I do have a question with that.
So we're pulling 8.01, alright.
Six.
Is the question?
6.01. I want to know if there are any vendors that we can use at Western instead of them bringing their own liquor and alcohol. I'm not sure how that works, but I'm curious to know about that before I vote to approve it.
Liquor and alcohol?
It's got a different number and everything. I see 7.01 in my, okay, no problem. So that one's pulled. I'm on 15.07 Denver, is it Elick Incorporated? 15.08 Interline? Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I'd like to pull that one, Madam Chair.
Okay, and the question?
I would just like staff to speak to the 1.5 million dollar increase for the contract.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd also like to go back for 12.01.
Alright, question?
I want to know, are these the only two book vendors that the district uses for professional learning materials and supplemental classroom library? And if not, what are the other vendors that city schools uses, and what are the amounts of those contracts?
Okay. 16.01 Urban Teacher Center?
Like to pull it, Vernon Reed.
Question?
My question is the efficacies and the success of the program.
Okay, thank you. So the items that have been pulled are 7.01, 12.01, 15.08, and 16.01. Okay, at this time we move to public comment, and I'm still not...
Commissioner Chinna, I'm sending you both ones right now. I just sent you the first one to your Verizon.
Okay. Speakers, I'm gonna be reading them first, the emails that we've received for public comment, and the first one, as soon as I get it? Let's begin, it might be easier if I just get you to read it because it's not coming up.
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind reading them both.
Okay, would you read the first one, please?
Sure. Give me one moment. So there's only two, only two members of the public signed up for public comment.
Okay.
The first is Anik Wenzey Agobi, and it is a question, it says, "Dear," the subject line was "Northwood Elementary School Design Development Update." Dear Baltimore City Board of Commissioners, what is the status of pending design and construction projects for 21st Century Schools, particularly schools slated to start construction after March 2020? The last update on 21st Century was provided at the February 11th, 2020 School Board Meeting. For example, my son's school, Northwood Elementary, was expected to have its construction drawings completed in late March 2020, and construction is to begin July 2020. Is that still on track? If not, what adjustments are being made? Please note that Governor Hogan's Executive Order, Maryland, still lists engineering, surveying, architectural, interior design, and construction firms as essential businesses that can remain open per certain guidelines. Please advise when you have a moment." And I will add, I don't know if staff has anything else to add. Our staff is aware of this and said they were providing comment. If any other else wants to jump in and say, but again, they're aware of this, and I've been told they provide written comment to the speaker, well, member of the public.
Thank you.
And then, is there any other comments from staff?
Are there any other comments today?
Do you want me to, yeah, this is Allison Perkins, calling Chief of Staff. I could just weigh in quickly. We'll get a formal response back, but in general, I would say that right now, the 21st Century work is going on as planned. You know, we are continuing to move forward, but, you know, there could be changes given we don't know what's coming, but for now, we are put in place standard operating procedures to be able to continue the work, and so we are still moving forward at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second is from Rebecca Yanaway, the Teachers Democracy Project, and it is, again, from parents in the Teachers Democracy Project, demands for the district during COVID-19. And I'll read the email. First, it says, "We want to see demands for the district. We want to see a plan to get technology and the internet in the hands of all children. Provide existing Chromebooks to juniors and seniors is a good start, but we will still want to see adequate technology in every home. One shared phone is not adequate. Disryers could persist and possibly return, and we need children to be able to learn remotely. Supporting learning at home where older students and teachers have access to technology. Have teachers replicate a modified version of the school day online. Distance learning. Teachers should teach through an online platform instead of in person." And it says in parentheses, "New York is currently providing online instruction at least for older grades, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. with an hour break for lunch. For younger grades and older students who don't have technology, asynchronous in real time and all online curriculum will not work. Students and parents need flexible options with teacher inputs. This should include learning apps and games, some optional online scheduled group time, projects that students can do semi-independently, a teacher who checks in with students and parents to address a learning plan and to address benchmarks." They said, "We appreciate the intent to create a hotline and feel this is important support." Third, assess the process. We would like student work to be assessed and evaluated at all grade levels. If access to technology and school supports have been adequate, then students should receive grades, especially those in critical years, juniors and seventh graders who are qualifying for college and competitive high schools. If access and support have not been adequate, we expect students to be given the benefit of the doubt and have opportunities to make up grades where scores determine high school and college choice." And it was a sign, it was a list of parents and grandparents and advocates who signed the demand letter. And that was the only two, there was the only two signings for public comment.
Okay, thank you. And we have copies of that second one also, correct? So?
Yes.
Any response? Okay, thank you. So, alright, so now based on the public comments, are there any additional items that the board members would like to pull from consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that, are we gonna go to the, do we have anyone for those specially recognized groups?
Yes, there's two.
I'm sorry. Yes, we have Zachary Taylor from Baltimore Teachers Union, sorry.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, good evening, everyone. First, the Baltimore Teachers Union wants to send comfort and thoughts to all those suffering through the hardship on the Baltimore City Schools community during this time. From teachers to PSRP's to administrators, and especially from students to families, there's an unknown toll of loss being experienced, from illnesses to economic struggle that will persist long beyond this current moment. We are all in this together, and the more we are able to acknowledge the unknowable circumstances that individual educators and families face, the better we'll be able to support one another. The BTU has welcomed the collaborative efforts of city schools during this pandemic. In these upcoming weeks of remote learning, we know there will be many challenges, anticipated and unanticipated. This has always been true for us as educators, and we will work to build solutions as we go forward. During this time, the BTU has helped teachers coordinate with one another to share instructional plans and ideas, and we've had many members assist in food distribution throughout the city. Educators are eager to resume regular contact with their students and provide the learning opportunities that will help create structure for them during this unprecedented time. With the continuity of learning plan put forward by city schools, we want to emphasize the underlying commitment that has been repeatedly reassured to us, a commitment to compassion, flexibility, and to realistic expectations while educators and students work to balance the schedules of those they live with. We know there will be bumps in the road along the way, and we will work with the district to smooth these over as fast as possible for our educators and for our students. As we're sure is the same with, throughout the Baltimore City's community, the BTU still has some significant concerns and unanswered questions. As we move into a distance learning plan based around computers, the school system needs to ensure that educators and students have equitable access to technology. Teachers, clinicians, PSRP's, and so on want to do the work, but we must have the equipment required to do so. Many educators have long been forced to use their own personal devices for instruction, but this is no longer possible, and it's no longer an option for many reasons, including the fact that many educators' own children now need these computers for their own remote work at home. As an extension to the school year looks more and more likely in terms of additional school closures, the distance learning needs, the distance learning plan needs to rapidly move towards securing and distributing computers to all educators. We also note that many districts have committed to purchasing computers for their students. These don't just include wealthy systems like Montgomery County. Boston, San Diego, Chicago, and many others are purchasing hundreds of thousands of Chromebooks and other devices for their students. We also note that Baltimore City has one of the most inequitable rates of connectivity to broadband in the United States. As advocates for our students and families, we need to think creatively about what action at a state and at a city level we need to take to guarantee long-lasting access for all students and not simply rely on the passing benevolence of Comcast and other internet providers. And we can't stress enough that we continue to have significant concerns for students who are learning English and for those who have disabilities during this time. We can't leave these students behind. We know these issues are hard, we recognize that instruction has never been done this way before, and we eagerly await further guidance from city schools and MSDE. The BTU also notes our disappointment in the board's action during the last meeting to move spring break while failing to preserve the Passover, Good Friday, and Easter Monday holidays. We saw other Maryland school districts protect these dates, and we know there's a potential for MSDE to deny waivers to allow school during that time, and we hope they do so. Our school system has thousands of employees and thousands of students who count on these days being dedicated to religious observance, and in this crisis, they should not have an additional uncertainty in their personal calendar. As these weeks continue, we urge all board commissioners to stay in constant contact with central office, staff, and to actively reach out to the BTU and BTU members to directly hear from us, our experiences, and to listen to our ideas. These are truly exceptional circumstances, and we ask that the board actively seek out as much information as you can from the educators who are interacting with and delivering instruction to our city's students. There are many more issues we'd like to share with you, and we hope to hear from you soon. Thank you.
Mr. Chinna, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm, thank you, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, I was muted and you didn't hear my thank you. Thank you very much. We also have Kimberly Asante from the Parent Community Advisory Board. And I know she's connected by phone, so please unmute as you speak. I'm not sure if she is there. So, okay, we're we're gonna move ahead then? And then based on the public comments that we've heard, are there additional items that any board members would like to have pulled? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Bondima.
Is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Okay, and I will do the call for those in favor. Bondima, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Frank?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Roberts?
My, the procurement that I wanted to pull is a part of the consent.
Which one did you ask to pull?
15.08.
Hello?
15.08 has been pulled.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Right. I, let me say again, the ones that are pulled are 17.01, 12.01, 15.08, and 16.01. So we're not voting on those, we're voting on the others. Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, 6.01, I asked for that to be pulled.
That is on my, I'm sorry, on my, on my copy, it says 7, I'm sorry. It's the waiver for Western, okay. That's what I'm pulling. I have it, I have it in my notes listed with a different number, but it is the waiver, 6.01, yes. Okay. Okay, I think I'm on Commissioner Frank in terms of approving the consent.
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So that is eight. Anyone opposed? No abstentions and one absent. So this motion passes. Now we're gonna go back to those items that we need some answers to, and the first is 6.01, the waiver requests for Western High School. And the question had to do with other vendors, so if there's someone from procurement or another staff person?
Yes, this is Joe Strick, I'll be answering the questions.
Commissioner McFadden, did you want to add anything to your question?
I wanted to know, I know that this is a fundraiser for Western and scholarship fundraiser. I'm just not sure, it raised a flag for me because I don't remember seeing before folks bringing their own, from what the letter said, that folks were bringing their own liquor and alcoholic beverages to the campus. I'm not sure if there is a vendor that we could use, how that has worked in the past. I've been at events at other schools, but it wasn't folks bringing their own liquor, it was monitored. So I just want some clarification of that before I vote.
This is This is a great question. So I think, you know, the fundraisers here, they're gonna be providing light refreshments, snacks, and things of that nature. So I think, you know, they didn't want to control it in that way, whereas in other times I've come to you with waivers, the waivers have been so that we can have vendors come and sell and serve alcohol. Where you're here, it's just for them to be allowed to bring their own to this fundraising event.
Okay, that, I guess that clears it up, but it also raises a concern for me, but I'm glad that you gave that. Thanks.
So just one other thing, they already have permitted for the space, and they also have security on hand to prevent anything from getting out of control, so hopefully that will kind of alleviate Concerns of over serving or over inviting.
Sure, but what what would the requirement be for a liquor license um then for for the school they've I'm not, I'm not understanding that process. So would they still need a liquor license even if they're bringing their own and they're on our um School campus and we're now being asked to waive the policy?
Yeah, that's correct. So Board Policy FKA prohibits the distribution or consumption of alcohol on city schools campuses. So even though they're not gonna be selling or ser- uh serving other people, Just the fact that they want to be allowed to um, you know, consume their own During the event. So that that's what the waiver request would uh would be for.
Joe, I have a question. How is this any different than the waivers that we receive for fundraisers at other Baltimore City Public Schools? Um we just had a fundraiser at Baltimore School for the Arts. Um and there's been, you know, a couple other waivers that have come through. Are there any, you know, outline or differences That this waiver presents than the ones that we've received previously?
So yeah, so that's a good question. Like, for example, Expressions with Baltimore uh School for the Arts, they have a vendor That serves the alcohol, and I believe that there are charges for it. So they have all of that Um through a catering company, whereas this one would be, if you go to the fundraiser, you're able to bring your own supply and consume what you bring. You would not be able to serve other people and you would not be able to sell that. Whereas, like, I know that I've written waiver requests recently for, like, an event at Edmondson where it was the same thing That uh they had a caterer that was going to be serving. So this would, if this is strictly for people to be able to consume their own Uh beverages that they bring themselves.
I appreciate it, Joe, because this is the first time that I've seen um this type um of waiver come before us. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, it's definitely a fair
Joe, Joe, um this is Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, one second. Is uh Commissioner Ra- uh Roberts, are you, were you finished?
Um it was one additional question, and it was just more along the lines of like how we, I mean, it's a more of a board question. Are we moving forward with authorizing waiver requests when our students aren't even in the buildings? And so are we willing to table a waiver request until we find out what we're, how students are moving forward? Or are buildings that have been cleaned, are they gonna be susceptible to outside organizations to use once? Like the random or or the various um governor orders have been lifted?
Yeah, I think so. That's a really good question, and I was actually thinking about pulling this. However, Since it's a fundraiser for student scholarships and it's not until May twenty third, I wanted to leave it open That if things get back to normal by May twenty third, that they'll a- that they'll be able to have adequate time to Um, you know, Get the community involved and able to attend the event. So I figured that, you know, if schools are closed, then we're not allowed out of our houses, That this event will be canceled. But I wanted to give as much lead time that they could advertise for this Uh in the event that things are back to normal for May twenty third.
Okay. This is Bandima.
Commissioner Richardson, I think, is next, and then Commissioner
Okay.
Thank you, um Commissioner Chinia. I just want to flag, and I and I appreciate Commissioner McFadden for flagging this, because this really is the first time that I can recall That a waiver's come before us for BYOB. And what what's more comfortable for me in terms of having a vendor is that you can control some of the consumption. Um and and so for me, that is a little, it it does make me a little nervous To kind of have people bring their own alcohol with no kind of way to have a bartender that could really control Um consumption. So I just want to flag that, that that is a concern for me.
Hello, this is this is Tasha from Operations. And I I just want to address uh the BYOB. This is the second time that this has come into play uh in November, and a waiver was approved for The City Poly Tailgate, in which they brought their own alcohol as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Bandima?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out what I'm voting for. Um I do know the School of the Arts, of course, had classic caterers. Um classic caterers who did the catering, who controlled, who controlled alcohol, and of course, they came with liquor license and all of that. And um and that was kind of planned in other places, other schools, I'm sure have said that. I'm also very, very concerned that um how can you control um uh making uh allowing groups or organizations But you sometimes don't know a lot about Hello?
Commissioner Bandima, are you still there?
Commissioner Chinia, while we wait for her to come back, is it okay?
It's fine, it's fine, we'll come back if she comes back.
Okay, so my statement around this one um would be, if they don't have supple- additional supplemental liability insurance, Then without having the intermediary factor of a caterer who absorbs that liability, that falls on us. It falls on us if somebody even isn't drinking, but trips it over somebody who does have a glass of wine and busts their ankle, that's a different level of liability. Um so we might want to consider requesting that they get supplemental liability insurance or hire a caterer to manage.
Madam Chair, um in addition to what Commissioner James Hassan said, um thank you so much uh for offering that. I think it was for Tasha, Tasha, that offered that um the board approved uh the City Poly BYOB. Um question, were there any negative implications of that approval in November?
We didn't, we didn't have any uh issues from that event. In school police, in school police was there, so there weren't, there was no uh There was no implications at the event that was in November.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh yeah, Commissioner McFadden.
Ronald McFadden, I don't want to prolong this, but I'm I'm looking at the waiver request from September twenty fourth. And it was to waive the usage of the parking lot. This didn't have, this doesn't have any language in here Um about folks bringing their own liquor. If I'm, if I need to look at something else, um I would like to, but right now I'm looking at the waiver request that's dated for September twenty fourth, and it just says That we waive FKA for the usage of the parking lot adjacent to the Baltimore Polytechnic Institute and Western High School during the event. So I just wanted to pull that up.
Okay, so we, so we um
I'm sorry, Commissioner McFadden, I'm looking, I'm looking at the waiver request as well um. And under recommendation, it says, the CEO recommends the board approve a waiver from Policy FKA Procedures for Public Use So that alcohol can be allowed at City Polyfest on November second, two thousand nineteen. Um and then in the first paragraph, it says, uh, members of the City Polyfest Partnership are requesting that the alcohol restriction Outline be waived for the usage of the parking lot adjacent to Bol- Baltimore Polytechnic Institute and Western. So it is in that uh in the first paragraph and in the last paragraph as well.
Joe, I see, I see exactly what you're saying, but it does not specifically say like what we see in front of us today, That you can bring your own. So this is just saying that alcohol can be allowed, But it does not specify whether or not there's a vendor there or whether people are bringing their own liquor.
That's right, thank you, Commissioner McFadden.
Commissioner uh uh Chinia, I got cut off in the middle of these.
Okay.
So I just want to get my little piece in. I'm sorry, did everybody say something? I don't know what happened. But I was saying, I don't, I can't remember where I was cut off, but I I have great concern about Uh alcohol being on site. Um and then other other locations, they had a catering, and I know you had that discussion. But you can't control if you uh if you allow people to rent or to use the facilities. You, somebody's um, you can't control who the groups are. And I have great concern with alcohol being on site when people bring BYOB, when they bring their own alcohol. Because we're, it's almost an accident waiting to happen.
Uh uh agreed. Um this one uh, this is not an outside group, and and I mean, it is the alumni, I believe, right, association?
Well, how do you control, how do you control having other people?
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying for this, this particular one is the Alumni Association for a fundraiser for scholarship, but I I do hear you. Uh and this, I ask, is is there a motion um to um To exte- you know, to approve this waiver, or if If not, then I, if we may be um Put it in a hole or defer in it. But is is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I actually would like, is it possible for us to table this? Because I think That with the consideration of the approval, with with the language not being clear with the approval in November for their City Poly Tailgate, And this being compared to that um event, uh and with the considerations that students are even in buildings right now, I don't think it would be appropriate to approve a fundraiser to take place in one of the buildings Um just off the basis of that.
So if that's a motion to table, I will second that.
Was that a motion, Commissioner Roberts?
For tabling it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the second was Commissioner James Hassan?
Our, yes ma'am.
Okay, those in favor of um tabling, this this, that's the motion that's on the floor. Commissioner Bandima?
Yes.
Commissioner uh Frank? Commissioner Frank, are you still there? Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden? Commissioner uh Reed?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh and Commissioner Brooks, I have seen.
Okay, uh um I have one abstention. Um is there um any opposed?
McFadden.
Okay. And Chinia. So we have um
Commissioner Chinia, what's your vote?
I said I I oppose.
Okay.
There are six in favor, uh two opposed, and one uh abstention, so this uh the motion to table passes.
And this is just for clarification, is tabling to a future meeting or tabling for a specific piece of information?
I would say we need to, uh the board needs to really clarify what the approval process is for BYOB. Um and if there's any specific language that needs to be included in the waiver forms So that we have continuity for approvals um of fundraisers like this.
And my second was in the hope that they will either secure additional insurance to offer Or consider hiring a caterer.
Right. Can I, can I just make a public um statement about this? Um so I understand that this was thought to have been, to have come before us earlier, and the language was unclear earlier. However, I I will not approve BYOB without additional sec- without additional insurance. And um I I just don't think it's a good practice for the board. So if this comes before us, This is to the Western um family. If this comes before us, I suggest Trying to look at other other ways of incorporating alcohol in this event.
That would be Western and anyone else that's using a school building.
Correct, correct.
And just a point of interest, just one question in terms of alcohol, is it defined as beer and wine or beer, beer and wine and hard liquor, if that could be entered as well?
Okay. Are we, uh I'm hoping that someone, Kristen or and or Joe and staff are getting all of this down.
I am, and I am also writing an email to the principal of Western uh as we speak, saying, you know, that this is conditional and that if a caterer is given Uh or additional insurance, that we could reconsider the vote. And this is really good feedback for me, as the person who writes the waivers, that, you know, if the board is against BYOB, That I will no longer be bringing these requests to you, and I'll let the uh requister know moving forward um the preference of the board.
Great.
This just maybe, this just might be me speaking, but I do see a distinction between beer and wine and beer and wine and hard liquor, Especially with um the question about insurance.
Okay. So I, so I think that, I think I'm hearing several things in terms of this specific one, but also Some consistency in in what these type of waivers should include.
This is, this is Band, this is Bandima. I think that we even, we should have a lengthy conversation In reference to which will include some of everybody's concerns. I have a difficult time Uh having, unless it's a caterer that's serving. I have a difficult time to have any kind of event at a school site With alcohol, period.
Okay.
Unless it's ca- a catered event.
I think that could be included in this whole, the the whole idea of of what should be included in the waiver. So we've heard, we've heard several things, and that 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 I think is a part of that too. So I hopefully will Take that back and um uh, you know, if there's some other input that the board wants to offer, if you want to send it in, we can, we can share that. And then take a look at what a a possible um waiver might look like, might read like in the future. Okay.
And um Commissioner Chinia, I just want to flag while I, while I was uh speaking. Um Kimberly Assante from the Parent Community Advisory Board is online to speak now. I advise that she can maybe speak after you go through the rest of the polled items for votes and comments and questions, but just want to Make you all aware that the uh P C A B rep is on, online and ready to speak once, once the board's finished with the uh items.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to item twelve point zero one, Barnes and Noble book sellers and the book rack. Commissioner McFadden, I think this was yours.
I'm just curious, thank you, uh Madam Chair. I'm just curious to know Um if these are the only two uh book vendors that we're using for the supplemental um resources. And if there are other contracts that we have with other vendors, I just want to know um what they look like. Because it's a significant chunks, and I know that we need the resources, but I'm just curious to know.
Hi, hi Commissioner, this is uh Matt Griffin from the Office of Teaching and Learning. Um we do have other vendor contracts, uh including Book Source, American Reading Company, Intac, AKJ, Um Teacher Creative Materials. Uh those are the big ones. I I can't speak to the exact amounts for those, but I know Joe Vogel is on the call as well and should be able to chime in. Um it is important to have multiple vendors, um A, so that our schools can obtain quotes from Several vendors to get the best rate, and also um because sometimes, you know, Of of most of what we buy from these vendors is related to our K to eight literacy curriculum. So a lot of times if one vendor doesn't have the stock that we need, it's important to have the other options to make sure that schools get their materials on time.
Sure, I understand that completely. I just would like to know the amount that we are currently setting aside for the supplemental resources. In addition to potentially us approving this today, I would be curious to know that at some point. So if you wouldn't mind, Um Joe, also, since you're on the line, if you could get that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Commissioner, yes, I will do that. I will send that through Kristen.
Thank you.
And we've already got the emails flying on the back here while we're listening.
Thank you. Any other, that was, any other question? If not, is there a a motion to approve this um item?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner McFadden, um is is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Richardson, okay. Um All right, I'm going through the roll, those in, all those in favor. Commissioner Bandima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank? Commission- Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ra- Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
I'm in favor, um, anyone opposed? Commissioner Brooks, are you voting?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can.
Commissioner Brooks, are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you, now.
Yes, yes, exactly, so, yes.
You're voting yes, okay. So the motion passes, we have, um... Nine, nine in favor, no one abstaining, no one opposed.
Mr. Chinya, I did not hear Commissioner Frank, did he weigh? Okay, just making sure.
Am I wrong, Commissioner Frank?
Um, I was on mute, sorry.
Oh, did you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so item 12.01, um, passes, is approved. The next one, um, was 15.08 Interline Brands Incorporated Supply Works. Don't remember who had the question on this, it was about increase of funds.
It was me, Madam Chair, Commissioner Roberts.
Commissioner Roberts?
Uh, so for this procurement, um, it started in 2017. It was 500,000. Last May, the board, um, increased the contract to 1.5 million. And so now this contract is for an increase of 1.5 million, bringing it to 2.6 million annually. Um, I would just like for, uh, the available staff to be able to speak to what does that 1.5 million increase equate to? And, and that's understanding and considering the state of emergency that we're in and the response to the COVID-19, uh, pandemic. Uh, but 1.5 million dollars is a big increase.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Blaine Lipsky with Director of Operations for Facility Maintenance and Operations. The 1.5 million dollar request annually is to prevent us from coming back to the board every month or two months during this COVID, uh, situation. It allows us to set an upset limit, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend it, but it's going to allow us to buy and secure products to provide to the schools as well as the schools being able to provide goods to disinfect, clean their schools at this time and move forward to, uh, prepare their schools depending on how long this outbreak lasts. It's not necessarily a, a, uh, spending of all 1.5 million dollars. It's an upset limit to be able for us to purchase without delay and coming back to the board with an emergency letter, um, at that time.
And this contract is through October 31st, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so would that be the basis of future contracts moving forward after this one ends? The 2.6 annual, like, would that be the, the continued, like, target budget?
That will be added to the annual original cost that was approved by the board previously. Um, when it ends in October 31st, 2020, there are two one-year renewal options or we have the option of going out the street and bid publicly again. But at this point, um, we're sure that we can have readily access to the vendor to secure goods. We believe this is an adequate amount this time based on current spending.
And just two more questions. So are these the same supplies that we've been using, just purchasing more or are these different supplies?
No, it's the same, it's the same vendor. It's just that we're buying more of a false supply. We're buying more gloves, we're buying disinfectant, we're buying additional cleaner, we're buying masks and, and the other items to combat this COVID-19.
Got it. And then last question. So for this contract, it doesn't have any MBE requirements to it? Or is this vendor able to subcontract any of that out?
This was a U.S. Communities Piggyback, I believe. At this time, they do not have that ability. Uh, going forward, we can ask them. It doesn't actually, when they reviewed this initial contract, it didn't allow for subcontracting because they're buying directly from the vendors themselves. Um, Interline is a, a subsidiary of Home Depot. And, uh, they get theirs from the vendors and they divide that out. We can discuss that when we come up to the renewal to see what they can do. But at this point, uh, MBE was reviewed and it was, uh, it was not allowable for subcontracting opportunities at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is, this is Joe Vogel, the Ginnam Director for Procurement. Just so that you understand where we are, um, financially with this contract. We have approximately $200,000 left and the board approved him out.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm not, so, I need to, I'm not certain where, where it needs to happen, but, um, I didn't, could not hear the, the ending. Uh, maybe some, make sure everyone is muted so that we can hear the response.
Yeah, the last thing I heard was we had $200,000 left in this contract.
Okay.
Okay, this is Blaine Lipsky again. I believe what Joe is saying is at the time of this, at the time of the governor's, um, first order directive on 3/5, operations got with procurement and realized that the upset limit was nearing the end and the reset timing was going to be October. This is why we came to the board in advance to request this large amount to, uh, provide adequate, um, buying opportunities for the schools as well as our operation. So we were near, you know, request, we had to request this amount and due to the COVID-19 outbreak, we requested a larger amount for the amount of supplies that we need for 165 school sites.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your, um, for being proactive in that.
Yeah.
We like to get ahead of things eventually, occasionally.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Commissioner McFadden?
This, uh, um, is brief, but through this contract, um, or this board letter, um, are the materials specifically for, um, I know that some schools and buildings, um, they contract with companies, uh, and org, uh, or other companies for their building service? Um, are these materials that we're talking about supplementing those company? Do those companies provide, for example, I'm just throwing one off the top of my head, like ABM, do they provide their own materials to use? Are we, um, potentially approving this as supplement their materials or are these our own, um...
No. Commissioner McFadden, this is, uh, Blaine again. This is just mainly for our school use as well as operational use. The contractual custodial contractors purchase their own through their own individual vendors and distributors.
Okay.
Okay. There's no other discussion there, a motion to approve this, um, this procurement item?
I'm a little vibrant.
Okay, is there a second?
Frank?
Commissioner Frank, okay, I'm gonna do all those in favor. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Okay, Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Um, I'm in favor. I don't hear Commissioner Brooks, so we have eight. Anyone opposed?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, are you in favor of this, uh...
Yes.
Procurement item?
Yes.
All righty. So we have, um, na, is it nine? Um, and, and no one opposed, no abstentions. So this, this procurement item is approved. And the last one is, um, item 16.01 Urban Teacher Center. Um, Commissioner Reed, I think you had questions.
Uh, yes, I did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we're paying 20, 25,000 per. I guess my question is, what's the benefit? Uh, because looking at the cohort's performance, looks like this was lower performance in the cohort. Are we getting the base, benefit of racial equity? We getting the benefits of STEM? We getting the benefits of a unique set of teachers? Uh, why are we spending this 25 grand and is, and is it, and what's the benefit and efficacy of doing such? Thank you.
Sheriff, hi, this is Jeremy Grant Skinner. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Uh, with respect to the $25,000, the first thing I would say is that our Urban Teachers, um, partnership is unique among our teacher preparation programs because, um, we are paying for the identification of someone, uh, who fills a teacher role, but we are also paying them for the full year of service as a resident in the pri, in the, in the resident, during the residency year. So, um, you know, most of the costs that we pay to urban teachers goes towards a stipend that the urban teacher residents earn in the year that they are training to become a teacher. And during that time, they're, and, uh, they're an additional adult in the classroom who is, um, through a gradual release model, taking on more responsibility. Um, and throughout the year, they are providing additional small group instruction to students in the class where they're completing their, classes where they're completing their residency. Um, so I would, if, if the $25,000 number stands out, I would, uh, that's the first thing I would highlight in terms of what makes, what makes it unique and what makes, um, it valuable to the district because we're getting a teacher after that residency year, but we're also getting the service that the resident is providing during the year. Um, I mean, otherwise, uh, Commissioner Reed, I, I, I don't know how much that answers your question. I have other information that I can highlight just about, um, the types of roles that they fill as teachers and then, um, retention over time. Um, but I'm not sure if, if you, if that's the type of information you're also seeking.
Do they also help us in terms of STEM teachers and providing racial equity in terms of the teachers we bring in? Uh, what else do they bring?
Yeah, absolutely, to both of those. Um, so, um, urban teachers, everyone who comes through the Urban Teachers Program is duly certified. Um, and, uh, so one of their certifications in every case is in special education. So it ensures that, um, that we fill additional special education vacancies, but also that when they are hired as a math teacher or an English teacher or in some cases, an early childhood education teacher, that, that as a general educator, they also have that special education training. Um, they, in the current year, 20% of our newly hired math teachers came through Urban Teachers. So they're definitely filling, uh, uh, part of that, uh, STEM requirement. They actually are not currently, um, approved by the state to provide, uh, trained science teachers. So, um, they, they do not provide us with science teachers. Um, and then in terms of, um, 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 racial diversity of our teacher workforce, um, like all of our alternative certification programs, um, they, um, are, have consistently in the past few years, um, been bringing in a, um, a, a group of, a cohort of new teachers um, who are, uh, roughly half, um, black and a majority, um, are, are people of color.
Thanks, Grant.
Chief, uh, Grant Skinner?
Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate, uh, your letter, uh, Chief Grant Skinner, by the way, with, you know, the data points that you include in, uh, the bottom portion. Um, since I've been on the board, we've approved the contract for the Urban Teacher Center each year. Uh, I have a question around, um, perhaps doing a multi-year contract for them. Why aren't we doing a multi-year contract with Urban Teacher Center? And why do we have to, why does that have to come up each year for us?
My screen froze for a while. I'm not sure if that did the same for others.
Uh, we can hear you now, chief.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I apologize, something, uh, froze on my screen. So Commissioner McFadden, I did not hear your question.
So I'm asking, why aren't we doing a multi-year contract, uh, with, uh, Urban Teacher Center? We've, this one is coming earlier than they have in the past. Um, but why, why are we not doing a multi-year contract?
Sure. Um, ultimately, uh, as we were preparing for this and we are, we're preparing it much earlier than in the past, um, our original intent, um, alongside Urban Teachers was to bring forth a proposal for a multi-year contract. Um, and the only reason that we are not doing so, um, is that as much as, uh, part of the question here was about, um, the, the cost, um, Urban Teachers flagged for us that as an organization, they, um, are in a place where they need to consider how to make sure their program is even more sustainable long-term. And they are not currently, um, able to commit to this price point beyond the 2019 or 2020, 2021 school year.
I also saw that the percentage of their, thank you for that, that the percentage of their developing, um, teachers, um, is higher than the average, I guess, of the rest of the, the cohort of first-year teachers, those first-year teachers. Um, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I mean, uh, what I would mostly share is, I mean, the, the distribution in terms of first-year teacher effectiveness ratings are not significantly different from urban teachers to other first-year teachers. Um, there are, there are some differences. So there are fewer highly effective urban teachers in the most recent cohort. There are also fewer ineffective teachers than, than other, other new, other first-year, first-year teachers. Um, one thing, uh, that I will say is, uh, I think in hindsight, based on the question the board had sent to us, uh, offline in between meetings is the column in here that talks about first-year teachers is also first-time city schools teachers. So that also includes teachers who are veteran teachers who we have recruited from other districts. Um, and that number, it was significantly higher last year than it was the year before that. So just want to, uh, ma- make sure it's clear that the comparison point is not really all first-time teachers to, uh, to each other, but really people who are in, for the first time in city schools.
I appreciate that, um, Chief Grant Skinner, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve this, um...
So moved. So moved, Reed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Frank.
I, I hear several, so we'll go, go and move on. Okay, so I'm gonna go through the roll call. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's nine. Um, anyone, no one opposed or abstained, that's nine. So this procurement, um, is approved. Thank you. I'm gonna, uh, at this point, I'm gonna go back and, um, ask, um, Ms. Assante uh, from the Parent Community Advisory Board. If she's on, um, uh, she is speaking for, for P-CAB tonight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kimberly Briscoe Assante. On behalf of all the thoughtful, concerned and passionate members of P-CAB, we would first like to acknowledge the efforts of BCPS and its support of parents, students and teachers during this very stressful time. P-CAB looks forward to our continued collaboration with BCPS. Based on our exchanges with parents, we would like to share the following comments and our role as a voice of parents. After two weeks of schools being closed, many parents are already overwhelmed... After two weeks of schools being closed, many parents are already overwhelmed as they balance the demand of work or the financial stress of losing work, assisting their children, some with a lack of confidence with schoolwork, feeding and providing structure for them in place of the classroom, and keeping themselves and their families safe and healthy. Insufficient access to technology or data internet service in the home is a concern as well as food insecurity and the loss of individualized accommodations and student support for those students who have special needs. There are also feelings of abandonment because of the perception of a lack of communication between parents and BCPS. There is a sense of frustration when the simple task of picking up a packet becomes an issue when the packets aren't available. Further, many parents have told us that they don't have the resources needed to print out the packets. In closing, if the school year extends, parents and community members have communicated their concern that there will be an unavoidable gap in educational gains if distance learning proves to be an ineffective substitute. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Asante. And I know that, um, uh, we will be clearly looking and addressing all of those concerns that you said. I know we have it in writing, um, and, um, the board, along with the CEO and staff, will, 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 will take in all of that into account.
Um, thank you.
Thank you again. There is a written update, um, that's available, which is the proposed social studies curriculum. Um, I don't know if there are any questions from the board, but we will, uh, I would make certain that you do read that. We will, uh, look at this item, um, at an April meeting. But I want to, at this point, really turn the meeting over to Dr. Santa Lisa's, for her comments and updates for everyone.
Great, thank you Commissioner Chinia, uh, the board, and, uh, the public who is, uh, tuning in, as well as for everyone, both the, uh, established, um, partners, as well as members of the public who submitted, uh, public testimony for this evening. Uh, before I launch fully into my comments for this evening, I would like to invite Chief Grant Skinner, um, for this evening's pep agenda.
Thank you. Hello again Commissioners and Dr. Santa Lisa. So we have one, uh, appointment, uh, this evening. Uh, and it is Christopher Dougherty, currently Chief Financial Officer at Thermochem Recovery International Incorporated. Is appointed Chief Financial Officer effective May 26th.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. Um, I will say that I am very pleased to welcome, um, Mr. Christopher Dougherty as the new Chief Financial Officer for City Schools Effective May 26th. Uh, we have searched, uh, long and hard to find the right person for this very critical position. And I am really excited to add someone with Chris's long history of public service, uh, to our city schools team. Uh, he brings a strong fiscal background and extensive experience in the public, private and non-private sectors. Uh, a real combination that gives him a unique perspective on the fiscal challenges we face. Um, and insights really to propose comprehensive and long-term solutions. As Chief Grant Skinner noted, Christopher joins us from Thermochem Recovery International, where he served as Chief Financial Officer since 2006. Prior to working for T R I, he served at the U.S. Department of Education in several roles, including Chief of Staff for the Office of the Deputy Secretary, Acting Assistant Deputy Secretary in the Office of Innovation and Improvement, Hurricane Katrina Response Task Force Leader, and Chief of Staff for the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh, Christopher also served as Executive Director of the Baltimore Curriculum Project and was the founding director and teacher at the Baraka School in Kenya, Africa. Christopher graduated from Stanford University and received his MBA from Northwestern University. Um, he and his wife have four children, two of whom have graduated from city schools and two who are currently high school students in, uh, Baltimore City Public Schools. They have resided in West Baltimore for more than 20 years and are parishioners at Corpus Christi Church in Bolton Hill. I really, um, am thrilled that Chris is joining and our team and bringing his, um, deep expertise in the area of finance, his love for education and his long-term commitment as part of Baltimore City, the larger Baltimore City, um, to his work here. Um, I also really want to take this opportunity to very personally thank Mary Ann Cox, uh, who was previously Deputy CFO, uh, for her outstanding work, professionalism and leadership as our interim CFO. Um, Mary Ann had all, was already working very long hours as Deputy CFO. Um, and she accepted this additional responsibility with her frankly very typical grace and enthusiasm. She did not have to do this, but her commitment to city schools to maintaining our fiduciary, uh, standing, um, and just her commitment to the young people and community of, of Baltimore, um, allowed her to perform this task with the commitment to excellence that really has been emblematic of her career at city schools. So, um, additionally, we really are grateful to, uh, Mary Ann for all of her work, um, these past months. Okay, um, now, uh, this evening, I would like to, uh, briefly highlight, uh, several items. Um, and again, as I think we all know from watching the news and the testimony, um, there has been a lot going on, um, both within city schools as well as, um, our city, state and country, uh, between, um, the two weeks, uh, uh, the previous two weeks, um, from our former meeting, um, and today. Uh, last Friday, the district sent out an important online survey to families to identify those in need of internet access or devices for their students, um, as well as those in need of food through possible home delivery. Uh, we also made the survey available, um, at our 18th site. We just want to encourage every family, um, to complete this survey. Um, as of last night, we had received, um, just under 7,000 responses to the survey. Uh, but we really do need to hear from as, as many of you as possible, um, so that we know how to best distribute, um, the Chromebooks for students that we have on hand and the ones that we have on order, um, and how to best serve those, um, who still lack adequate food, uh, for families. We also have been very cognizant of some of the added pressure on our undocumented families who may be reluctant to share their personal information. Um, but I can assure you that do not share this information with any third parties. And, um, we really just need to know who and where you are so that we can provide your family with support, um, and know that our schools are also, um, joining us in, uh, this effort. Um, as a reminder, our 18th meal sites, um, reopened yesterday. Uh, they are going to continue to serve, uh, four take-home meals per student or adult every day, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Um, at this time, adults are allowed to pick up meals for their children. Um, additionally, nurses will be available, um, at our school sites to perform, um, uh, health, uh, some health screening, uh, for our, uh, for our work. Um, the best source of up-to-date information is still our district website. Uh, we've also established a COVID, COVID information hotline for families, again at 443-984-2000. Our parent hotline will be available by Monday, April 6th to provide families with, um, academic assistance packets, um, and online work as we make that shift. Um, there will also be, uh, resources there for families, um, who need additional social emotional support for their young people and also, um, assistance and support in connecting with additional resources throughout the city. Um, families need food should also visit the same health update section of our website, um, or go to Maryland Food Bank, MDFoodbank.org to find, um, their nearest pantry location. Um, if families have questions or concerns, uh, specific to students with disabilities, uh, they may contact the Parent Response Unit at 443-984-1561. Um, next, I really just want to, uh, thank all of our families and staff. Uh, one, for just their tenacity and flexibility during this period. Um, we continue to work to improve our operations, to improve our support. Uh, I cannot iterate enough that this is uncharted territory. And so, um, we appreciate, I personally, and I know the team does, the patience that our families and staff have shown, uh, during this, um, this real challenging period for us, um, as a community and as a nation, quite frankly. Um, the other piece I, I do want to acknowledge is that, um, where we stand now, we are continuing to prioritize, uh, food distribution as long as we do so safely, as well as, um, really supporting educational and, and learn, learning continuity for our young people during this time. And, uh, I, I definitely hear, uh, the stress that our families are under. Um, even as a parent myself, you know, maintaining, um, the functions of CEO of the school district and trying to make sure, um, my daughter's needs are met is stressful for all of us and for a large number of our families. Uh, it is just added to what is already kind of stressful, uh, search and need for resources. And so we will continue to, um, take the feedback and adjust as we need to. Uh, we are, um, and, and I also want to let folks know that we are collaborating with colleagues across the state, um, as well as with the state superintendent, really highlighting some of the needs of Baltimore City in particular, um, that as we move forward in some of the questions that I know were surfaced in public comments and others, um, that we are working collaboratively, but also very much keeping in mind and at the forefront, um, of our focus right now is making sure that young people and families, now that we are back from spring break, um, really making sure that we are prioritizing connections, connections between principals and teachers, uh, central support and principals, and most importantly, uh, teachers and principals with families. Um, so, uh, just know that that will be ramping up April 6th through a variety of means, um, and that we are, um, prioritizing and secure and redirecting and committing, uh, both our internal funds as well as those that we are raising, um, towards, um, accessing, uh, technology. However, I want to be very forceful right, that this is not going to be stood up in a day. And I frankly have also been in contact with my colleagues in other major urban districts, those who have similar demographics to ours and similar funding patterns, like Cleveland and Detroit, and even in Chicago, where hundreds of thousands of, you know, uh, laptops and technology are being rolled out, um, they too have gaps. And so part of what we are doing now is accelerating, redirecting and prioritizing. Uh, but I know that we are working with this, knowing that nothing will completely take the place of what a number of our young people receive every day within teachers. But we are not relinquished this time as lost time. And so we are working feverishly around the clock, uh, to make sure that we accelerate that access, but know that we are simultaneously planning for what I am calling educational recovery. We already know that our most vulnerable young people, we already know that we will have young people for whom we will need to queue up additional support options once we move into a phase where we are not, um, at kind of peak, uh, COVID response. When, when this is over and schools open back, um, we already know that we will need educational recovery support. So I want, I just want to make clear, um, that we are doing, it is a both and. It is not an either or. And we are going to do, we're going to continue to respond and adjust. But just know that for all of our young people, we are going to need to begin to plan and, and staff actually already is spending some time doing that to queue up what we are going to have to provide for support for young people to make up some of that time. Um, I really also want to take this opportunity to thank every member of our city schools team for their outstanding efforts on behalf of our students and families. Um, many folks who are part of central support, um, frankly had no spring break. They worked around the clock, uh, and frankly, their, their spring break was a donation and one that they did willingly, one that they did without complaint, um, because of their care for our young people and community. I want to, uh, really thank, um, the, you know, a, a number of other folks, like cafeteria workers and custodial crews, and, and also teachers and principals, um, many of whom have gone above and beyond, um, because of their commitment to our young people. And eve- yesterday and today, teachers and principals, um, are attending professional development to prepare for long-distance learning. Um, and though many of them are still finding time to reach out to their students and families, um, and even attaching individual lesson plans to their work packets and using social media like Instagram, um, to reach out to young people. And so I want the city school staff to know that I see you. Uh, we appreciate you and we know what you are doing on behalf of our young people. Um, and so I want to thank everyone for their work. I want to thank the young people and so that everyone knows, um, no, not everything is perfect. We are adjusting, we are improving. But I had the opportunity the other day to speak to, um, this past weekend, actually, some of our city school student leaders, and these were high school students. And one of the things that they made clear that they appreciated, um, they do appreciate the roll calls and, believe it or not, packets are not full instruction, uh, but they appreciated the packets and the, the, the connection to schools and this connection to their, their school communities. And so their message to me, one, that we are holding, and that is our priority, is making sure that we are reinforcing the connection and communication to families. Uh, please keep tuned, and I, I hear, um, from some of the families that are experiencing difficulties, please call our hotline, let us know if there's a place where you are unable and you are unable to find packets, flag that for us. And we will absolutely continue working with partners like Kazaza, BTU, uh, PCAB, and the vast numbers of community organizations that are standing this up. But I want to thank everyone, uh, for their work and... But I want to thank everyone for their work and just your continued commitment. That is what it's going to take, and this is an ongoing iterative exercise, and we are seeking best practices in other places, as well as the resources in City Schools. So that ends my update for this evening, Commissioner Chinia, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. I too, I want to extend my thanks to Dr. Santalisis and staff, the teachers, the principals. I also want to thank another set of teachers, those first teachers, the parents that I know are working hard at home, and just to let you know and to ensure to you that the board is working very closely with the staff. We are looking forward to this vision of what will happen next. We are, in some ways, as frustrated and anxious as we're going through this uncertain time right now, which is one that none of us in our lifetime, most of us in our lifetime have not had to really go through, and we're hoping that this will end soon. But we also want to be certain that everyone is safe and sound. We ask that you continue to follow the directives that we have from the state. I know that some young people may think that because they're not in school that this is free time. I think you've been hearing tonight that it is not free time. We need to continue the practice of learning in any way that you can at home, either through the packets, or through the online, the distance learning, or just sitting down together and reading and practicing some math with mom and dad or family members. But please, we will continue to be supportive of each other and to work together. We will have another virtual meeting. It's scheduled for Tuesday, April the 14th.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I don't mean to interrupt, but I have a question for either Dr. Santalisis or for Chief Davis.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know, I've been talking to several teachers and several students also, I wanted to know about the grade guidance, guidance that teachers and school leaders have been getting about grades. Did we cut grades off on March 12? Are there still questions that we have, and this will come out later in some guidance to us? I just wanted to know a little bit about that, and where we stood right now with graduation.
Yeah, Commissioner McFadden, this is John Davis. So two things, or two or three things about this. We have given third quarter guidance. What we've said is that all the grades that should count should be through the time that students were in class, which it was March 12, and we're giving them this week and next week to make up any work that they may have missed for the end of that third quarter. Ultimately, we want to err on the side of students and giving them as many opportunities as possible, given the extreme situation that we're in. So we've provided that guidance, and that went out yesterday. Fourth quarter guidance we have not provided, and graduation guidance we have not provided. Both of those will probably be influenced by our state, by the Maryland State Department of Education, and there are people in Baltimore City Public Schools that are working on work groups with them. So we do plan to get something out and give guidance, but right now, so far, we just have third quarter guidance that we provided.
I appreciate that. I just, when I was talking to some folks, they seemed a bit confused about when that third quarter cut off, but apparently you provided the guidance, so I'm sure we'll hear more about that over time.
Yeah, it's less than 24 hours old.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up to that, Chief Davis. What does that process look like for students making that missed work?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Commissioner Roberts, one more time.
What does that process look like for students making that missed work?
Any way that they can get the missed work to their teacher, they can, right? I've heard times where people are taking pictures of their missed work and provided it. Maybe they gave it after March 12, when there was still some people that would come up to schools. We just want to be very clear that in any way possible that we can get it to new teachers, we should do that.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
I do have one last question for Dr. Santalisis. And this is more so focused toward charter and traditional, I'm not even really sure how to word this, but some of the charter schools, Massan School being one of them, had already sent out a technology assessment survey. And so when the district sent one out, I myself felt conflicted if I should fill it out because I didn't want to duplicate the responses. So is it possible, or I'm not even sure what that looks like on the back end, of those responses not being duplicated? Are charters being included in what the assessment of the technology needs are, or are they not? Are they just responsible for their own technology challenges?
I can jump in and give you a bit of an update, so.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
No problem. So the intent was that the survey was getting information for all schools, inclusive of charters, and while we're aware that there are some schools that had started sending out their own surveys before that survey was released, we are asking families to complete the district survey so that we can have a coordinated, centralized effort for deployment.
Is it possible for communications to include that in the language? Because even for me, that was confusing, having already completed a survey. I didn't know until I actually clicked into the survey that it was more comprehensive than what I had already completed.
Certainly, we'll give that feedback to communications and work on those updates in future messaging. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also, this is Commissioner Brooks. Just briefly, Chief Davis, can you give us an update on specifically the language that you all have, the instructions you've given to teachers specifically about synchronous and asynchronous learning, but what has gone out to the teachers in terms of what they're responsible for?
We haven't given specific guidance about asynchronous versus synchronous learning, Commissioner. What we have said is that because we will have lessons online and through our education and TV channels, we will want teachers to follow up with those lessons and get students together to answer any clarifying questions, to kind of push the learning as much as possible. We've also made sure that we were telling high school teachers that a lot of their work should happen online and through Google Classrooms. We do want them to continue the instruction and continue along the curriculum. What we've provided to teachers, or what we're providing this week, just to be clear, is also kind of a condensed topics that we want to be covered during this last, whatever it is, maybe 10 weeks of the year, so that we can be as concise as possible and be as clear as possible.
Great, I really appreciate that. Would it be possible for you to make sure that gets that, when you all decide to put together clear guidance for teachers in terms of how you want them to engage in online distance learning, just to make sure the board gets some information for us on that too.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak, or if not, I'm going to indicate the upcoming meetings? Okay, again, just as I know people are hearing, the variety of questions, this is another sign of very different, as Dr. Santalisis said, uncharted territory for us as we're moving through this year, trying to really get a handle on everything. We will have a virtual meeting on April the 14th. There will be an executive session at 3:00 p.m., and the public meeting at 5:00 p.m. Thank everyone for being with us this evening. If you have any additional questions, you may either send them to the board office. You've also heard of the hotline. Please check the website for other ways. You can always contact your schools, but please do not go with questions that you feel are important that have not been answered for you. With that, is there a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
So moved, funding.
Is there a second?
Second, Brooke.
Okay, thank you. Anyone opposed? If not, I'm feeling that everyone is in favor, and our meeting is adjourned this evening. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.